The atomic clock says it is six o'clock, so I will call this meeting to order, the Mayor and Council of the City of Villarica, this November the 7th, 2017, at 6:00 PM. We will have our invocation by Councilman Danny Carter, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, let's rise.
Hallelujah, Most gracious heavenly Father, we come to you tonight with heavy hearts for the people in Texas, First Baptist Church. We ask that you would be with them, comfort them as only you can, Lord. We ask you to be with us tonight as we conduct the city's business. Help us to follow the right directions, to make the right decisions, just for the people of Villarica. Lead, guide, and direct us as we do that. Christ's name we pray, amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. Okay, we have three proclamations that I would like to read tonight. And the first one is for a very good friend of mine, and for a friend of the City of Villarica's, and that is Perry Bill Bailey. And so I'm going to read the proclamation, and I'm going to say a few words on his behalf. But the proclamation is whereas Perry Bill Bailey was born in Atlanta, Georgia, and initially began his radio career in West Georgia College, and whereas Bill Bailey later served as a radio personality for numerous radio stations in Texas and northern Alabama, and whereas Bill Bailey devoted significant time to organizing RadioThons to raise money for St. Jude's Research Hospital in Memphis, Tennessee, and whereas Bill Bailey has always had a love for the Fullerville area of Villarica, and whereas due to his parents' connection to Fullerville, Bill Bailey took a keen interest in preserving the history of the community, and particularly the tiny structure in the mill village that the mill operators used to incarcerate intoxicated workers overnight, helping them avoid criminal charges in the city, so they could return to work as soon as they were sober, known as the Fullerville Jail, and whereas in 2010 Bailey's interest in the community and Fullerville Jail culminated in the book entitled, "The West Georgia Mills and Their People", and whereas Bill Bailey has worked tirelessly to preserve the history and heritage of this important part of the City of Villarica, now therefore I, Jeff Reese, Mayor of the City of Villarica, do hereby proclaim that Perry Bill Bailey be appointed as the Grand Marshal for the 39th Annual Gold Rush Festival in the City of Villarica during 2017, which we just recently had. Now therefore, let's see, it is hereby, I lost my place. It is hereby further proclaimed that the city does hereby thank Bill Bailey for his contributions, and offers him the deepest gratitude for his work on behalf of the citizens of the City of Villarica, and for his enthusiasm and support in the city through his talents. It is further proclaimed that a copy of the proclamation be recorded in the official minutes of the City of Villarica to preserve it in perpetuity. This 7th day of November, 2017. And I just want to say, Bill, Mr. Bailey couldn't be here, but I know he's watching this on TV. I talked to him today. His health is improving. Bill has struggled with cancer for some time now, and has fought it. Like I know he would fight, he's fought everything in his life with integrity and with honor. And Bill is a good friend of mine, he's a good, like I said, he's a good friend of the City of Villarica. And I'd just like to honor him, and y'all give him a hand, he is a great man. And we will make sure this gets to Mr. Bailey. He is an Alabama fan. Okay. The second proclamation that we have is a Day of Remembrance on December the 5th, 2017, for the 60th anniversary of the gas explosion in the City of Villarica. The proclamation reads whereas the natural gas explosion in downtown Villarica on December the 5th, 1957, was a tragic event that took the lives of 12 people, injured 24 others, and leveled several buildings, and whereas many worked for days to rescue and recover, and many gave of their time and talents to support the family and friends of those touched by this tragedy, and whereas we, the people of Villarica, should always remember the lives of those lost and families of all touched by this tragic event, and the giving spirit of the residents of Villarica, and the many who came to help, and whereas a day of remembrance has been set aside for the people of Villarica to remember the victims of the 1957 gas explosion, as well as to reflect on how a community came together in healing support to help rebuild lives and buildings. Now therefore, I, Jeff Reese, Mayor of the City of Villarica, do hereby proclaim December the 5th, 2017, the 60th anniversary of downtown Villarica gas explosion as a day of remembrance in memory of the victims and in honor of all those who provided aid and support. I encourage everyone to join me on Tuesday, December the 5th, 2017, at 11:00 AM at Hillcrest Cemetery to dedicate the Remembrance Garden in memory and honor of all the lives that changed by the 1957 gas explosion. Proclaim this 7th day of November, 2017. Do we have someone from the family here?
No, we do not.
Okay. All right, and last but certainly not least, I'm going to read a proclamation on behalf of our veterans. And before I read the proclamation, could I ask, if you're a veteran, would you please stand? We have come a long way in this country, and we have a long way to go, but we have grown as a country on the backs of those people that stood, and the many other ones that aren't here tonight. And so this proclamation reads whereas we are pleased and honored that the City of Villarica has again this year to pay tribute on this day to the dedicated veterans who have served this great nation with such distinction, both in peacetime and in war, and whereas our community has a continuing sense of gratitude to those who have given so much in the defense of freedom, which we all continue to enjoy, and whereas Americans have an abiding faith in the ideals and strengths on which our great nation was founded, in our democratic process, and in the men and women of the armed services who have served our country so well, and whereas in honor of these dedicated men and women, we pledge our continued defense of our nation, so that their sacrifice will stand before the entire world as a tribute to the spirit and determination of a people dedicated to the principles of freedom and democracy, and whereas on this patriotic occasion, let us all commit ourselves to the great need of fostering a spirit of rededication to our ideals that have served as a foundation of this great country. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now therefore, I, Jeff Reese, Mayor of the City of Villarica, do proclaim Saturday, November the 11th, 2017, is Honor Our Veterans Day. In the City of Villarica, and we urge all our citizens to honor our veterans and rededicate themselves in the preservation of our liberties under the Constitution. Proclaim this 7th day of November, 2017. Yes, I believe we have some, Ms. Mims, would you like to get up and say something? I hope I didn't put you on the spot.
No, sir, that's fine. On behalf of the Abraham Baldwin Chapter, Doctors of the American Revolution, I want to thank you for the proclamation, and want to remind everyone that not only is November 11th our Veterans Day, but to also remind you that 11-11-11 was an important time, because in 1918, when we had the end of World War I, and the Treaty of Versailles signed on the 11th day, at the 11th month, and 11th hour, that Armistice Day now became Veterans Day. And I'd like to remind everyone that our President has told us that this month now, in addition to Veterans Day on November 11th, that we are celebrating National Veterans and Military Families Month, and that he encourages all communities, all sectors of society, and all Americans to acknowledge and honor the service, sacrifice, and contributions to veterans and military families for what they have done for us, and what they have done every day to support our great nation. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, council, you have had a chance to look at the agenda. Do I hear a motion that we adopt the agenda as presented? Have a motion? Okay, we have a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor? It is unanimous. Okay. Council updates. Let me go ahead and get this one out of the way. I started to say it then, but I don't want to say it. We have started with our new process. If you didn't see us on TV, last Thursday, I have asked the council, when we make motions, that they be clearly stated what the motion is, and that our city clerk read those motions back, so that everybody knows exactly what they're voting on, what's seconded, and we have a vote, and we can say that we all understood completely. If you don't understand, obviously, then you need to speak up. But in addition to that, I would like to ask that we try to conduct our meetings more orderly. Looking back at the last meeting that we had, from the public's standpoint, a lot of times when a motion is made, I know there are multiple times, that several people make the same motion, and it's seconded, and there's a little bit of discussion, and sometimes it can get a little bit hard for the public to understand exactly what we're voting on, and exactly what's been seconded. So I would ask that you, if someone makes the motion by Robert's Rules of Order, it has to have a second before it's discussed. So if someone makes a motion, that person has the floor while that motion is made. And then when the motion is seconded, then it is up for discussion. So Robert's Rules of Order, although they seem kind of obsolete, actually are there for a reason. And having conducted many meetings in my life, they will cut our meetings in half in some cases. So I would ask that we continue to think about those things, and I will remind you as we go along. So, anyone else? Okay. Moving on to our city manager's report, Mr. Barber.
Thank you, Mayor. I have seven items to bring to your attention tonight. The first, again, is a personnel update. As you'll see, we had a couple of people start work with us this week. We've been in the process of trying to fill several key positions, and you can see that we're having some success with one of those, and two, we're not. So we've got a couple of extended deadlines where we're not getting candidates that we like. We have a really good pool of applicants for the IT manager position. Maybe 30-plus applications in total, 15 well-qualified people. It's like we're going to phone interview five of them, and we'll keep you abreast of that. If you have any questions, stop me, otherwise I'm going to go through these so we can get on to the main part of the meeting. Water supply, we talked about recently that Pete and I were meeting with Douglas County Water Authority. We got our first look at what they felt like would be the components of a new contract. The contract that we're in is so onerous that we have not bought any water under it in the nine-year history of the agreement. And I'm not sure that with this proposal, that that's going to change significantly, but that was just our first look, so we'll see how that goes. We're supposed to get together again, maybe the end of November, 1st of December. Pete and I are going down to EPD tomorrow to talk about our water supply permit. One of the issues that we are trying to deal with is the use of our population projections in the Carroll Water Authority Permit Application. And to our great chagrin, we discovered in the meeting with Douglas that they have done the same thing. So we have that issue in both relationships, and so we're going to go down and talk to EPD about how to address that. There's sort of a nice way of doing it, and a not-nice way of doing it, and so we're going to talk about the nice way, and see where that gets us, and if not, then we'll keep going. North Loop Funding has not been resolved. You've seen the articles in the paper. We're trying to get a meeting with the GDOC Commissioner about that. Goldworth Farm, which is a project proposed down on 61, north of the V-Plex, where the old camp was, and the Williams Dairy Farm from some time ago. They have asked us to initiate a DRI, which is a Development of Regional Impact Review by Three Rivers Regional Commission. We met with the rep of Three Rivers that does that on Monday, and we're given the application. We talked through the process a little bit, what we could expect, and what he recommended that the developer do and not do, so that's underway. We have a meeting upcoming in late November between that group of developers, the Villarica Housing Authority, and their consultant, who they're using, a former HUD guy, to talk about the possibility of the two of them working together on that development, and locating part of the future housing authority development in that complex. Several introductions were made recently. As I'm getting around and trying to meet everybody, I had a meeting with the Fire Chief and Assistant Chief for Douglas County to talk specifically about fire hydrant flushing on that side of town. I had my first meeting with the Douglas School Superintendent, and we talked about how we would communicate with them as we experienced residential growth on the east side, so that they could do facilities planning, which is a fairly expensive and protracted process. So we had that first conversation. I'm expecting with both school systems to develop a relationship with a staff person on one side, I think, and a consultant on the other side, that advises the two school systems on that, so that we can have a way to communicate with them a little better about what's happening with housing starts. I think the last time that I got something from NAREE that we had 59 permits issued for residential this year, not counting the Hawthorne Expansion, the apartment complex, but 59 residential, single-family detached. So that's starting to pick up. I'm hoping we'll see 100 next year, at least, you know, moving toward our goal, which is to get to 200 a year. I think that would be healthy for us. I met with two of the Carroll County School Board members for the first time, the two that represent Villarica, and explained redevelopment powers, and the TAD, and everything related to that. Chris and I are going to meet with the full board tomorrow night. Chris will be doing a PowerPoint, as you might expect, and will be trying to make the first presentation to them of just an educational process of what may take two years or longer on our end to get redevelopment in place, and to have a potential TAD project for them to actually consider. So this is really early in the process, but they've been very supportive so far, so we'll let you know how that goes. All right, we had a phone conversation with HEH and Falcon to talk about the punch list. If you'll recall, there were four items on the list. There are five now after the last council meeting. So when we met, we were talking about how we would modify the shoulders, what we would do about the holidays and Bird Bath, you know, just the repairs from a quality standpoint.
Tom, would you mention what the punch list is for?
This is to repair the work done during the 2000, I guess, late '16, early '17 paving from L-MIG, our annual repaving road surfacing project. So back to that, the four things were shoulder modification, the repair, the driveway modifications, and then the final striping. When we got out of the council meeting, we had a fifth item, which was the bridge transitions. So we had agreed, the council had agreed on who was going to pay for what, and when we got into the meeting and talked to HEH about it, they agreed that the holiday and Bird Bath repair was theirs. We agreed that, or we both agreed, that the striping was in the contract, so we would execute that as we had agreed. The driveway modifications, the council had agreed, were HEH's responsibility. The shoulder modification, let me think which one was which. Shoulder and driveway, one was ours and one was theirs. Anyway, when we got into it, what we were told by Skip in particular was when I really pressed him about what got communicated, about the way that we did the width of the road, and how we tried to stop at the white lines instead of going out to the edge of the asphalt, that we did Carroll, sort of trying to stick to the white lines. If you go out there and look, I mean, you know, it's not a perfect straight line, but after that happened, we communicated to them that that wasn't acceptable, and some of the other roads that they did were done differently. But he finally said to us, yeah, I can see how they understood from what was communicated to them that doing only to the lines was what we expected. So I'm coming back to you now, saying that the shoulder modification work should be on our nickel based on what we told them. And y'all need to tell me if you want to go ahead with that or not. So that would be applying dirt for 3,800 feet, linear feet, compacting it, hydroseeding it.
Wait, you go ahead. A second, that South Carroll Road project. Are you talking about South Carroll Road when you talk about these number of feet?
Right.
And the white line?
Right.
We discussed this in council, we looked at that contract, and that contract called for a certain number of feet, and not these white lines. And I don't mean to interrupt your report, but I want to make sure that we look at this contract before we agree to anything like that. And David, we talked about that in a meeting.
We did, and the contract says what it says, but again, the position, and our engineers seem to acknowledge this, that the city, through its representative, told the company to do something other than what was in the contract.
More than once.
I'm expecting the contract to be followed.
Well, if you got into some litigation about that, true, but if the evidence comes out that the city verbally, you know, gave them a different direction than what was in the contract, that would impact what the end result would be.
Okay, maybe that may not be appropriate to discuss right now, then. I just want to make sure we don't agree to that, to what you're talking about, until we've had a chance to vet that out.
Right, the biggest change that was made verbally was to tell them to not mill. And that's why we had the driveway problem in so many places. When we went out and cored, we found that we have places where we have six inches of top coat, where we've overlaid, and overlaid, and overlaid. So not only was this a problem this time, but we have a pattern and practice of doing it. And repairing that is going to be expensive.
Very expensive.
Because we're going to have to go back and mill a significant number of lane miles to get back to where we need to be. So we've saved money in the short run, and we're going to pay for it one day.
One comment on that, I received a call today from a, and I think you might have gotten the same call, Tom. The crosswalk on South Carroll Road, right there at Wilson Street, was never put back in. And we've had some near misses. People don't recor, they didn't slow down when it was a crosswalk. Now there's no crosswalk there, so guess what? So we need to get that put in, if not, you know, with, you know, just put some traffic paint down. But I would like to also ask that staff, our new engineer and staff, look at, that's particularly dangerous pedestrian crossing because of the rate of speed coming down that hill off South Carroll. People try to beat the red light, or try to get the green light, and avoid the red light. But that may be an application where we can look at a raised pedestrian crosswalk right there. To slow people down, it serves two purposes. It identifies that as a place where people are crossing. But it also slows people down, which is the key element there. So I would like to, if the council is okay with it, for the staff to look at that.
Absolutely.
If they cut them roads, bush it down.
Yeah.
Cut something down?
That's a hazard right there.
Cut something down, is that what I heard?
Oh, it's not about the paving, but I said those road bushes right there is a hazard too. I don't know who owned it, but you have to almost get out in South Carroll in order to see that's coming from, you know, from Carroll.
All right, so what I'm intending to do is I'm going to get estimates on the part of this. That's going to be our responsibility, and we'll have that on the next agenda for you to consider. And if we want to talk some more about how we got into this thing, I can do that, but...
We are still holding a considerable amount of money from HEH paving, just so the public knows, you know, they haven't been completely paid, so...
We need to continue to do that.
Right. Yeah, one of the only, well, it won't matter in the end, but at this point, because of the way we did the project, you know, we're not, we haven't expended even what you approved. We haven't been obligated for it, and we haven't expended it, because we haven't paid them, but anyway, we'll bring that back, we'll work on it some more, but you know, that's coming along.
This is sort of related to that. I believe we are in the L-MIG cycle now, are we not?
Correct.
So someone's putting together that information?
You're right, we have put out a bid for a project list with unit pricing. It came in at about a million, one, two bids, Matthews and Bartow. Only seven grand apart, but we're going back through the road list now. And the issue that I have with the road list, which I can't look at and evaluate, because I don't know the roads, so I've been riding them with, you know, with the guys, is the water issue. Is I can't tell how many of them we can safely resurface because of the threat of having to go back and rip them up. So even though I'm getting familiar with them, I think what's going to wind up happening is Pete and Bobby and I are going to have to go back and ride again, and then do some kind of research about not only what condition is the road in, and how long, and how much traffic, and all that, but you know, where is the water line exactly, and where's the sewer line? A lot of them are in the middle of the road, and you know, are we likely to rip it up soon? So I don't know, it's not a very straightforward process. So we're, I'm working through that, trying to get up to speed. And of course Bobby, this, you know, this is his second week, so he's, I don't know, is today the first day you've ridden, second day? Because I know you've gone out, okay. So he's starting to go out some and see some of this, so...
He's still here.
We're working on it, yeah, he's still here.
And just for the public, L-MIG, all these acronyms we use in government are somewhat confusing, but was the old LARP, but didn't that tell you a lot? It was called the LARP, and I know what the acronym LARP stands for. L-MIG stands for Local Maintenance...
Improvement Grant.
Improvement Grant, and the reason it changed from LARP, that was mainly roads. Now it's been extended to other things in addition to roads, so... But that's money that comes from the state of Georgia, and it's... from, from the state of Georgia, uh, and it's allocated to the cities, uh, based on the number of centerline miles that we submit every year to the state, so, just for everybody's educational.
I think, I think we get about 175 grand, and then we put splosh with it, and that's all, we're not putting general fund with it, are we?
And it looks like we've done a lot of, you know, paving this year, because 61, you know, parts of it have been paved, Industrial Boulevard's been paved, those are not part of the L-MIG, the state of Georgia, those are state highways, so those are doing those, but they're doing a tremendous job on paving, not so good on traffic control and time of day, and trust me, I, I get the calls.
Right, all right, one more item, um, and I don't think Chief Mansour's here, but Sadis is here, but anyway, so, um, GMA hosted a community policing workshop recently, and I think it was in Thompson or somewhere, it was a long way away, and so, the chief wanted to go and, but didn't wanna go that far, so he called GMA, and of course, you know, when you do something like that, something unintended happens, and so, he said, you know, are y'all gonna do one out this way, this easier for me to get to? And she said, well, how about you hosting one, right? And so, so it looks like we're gonna host one, so we're gonna have some folks from other cities, which will give us an opportunity to show off, show off the place a little bit. We're talking about having it down at the B-plex, it'll be December the 14th, from 1:00 to 4:00, or 4:30, so that's upcoming alts.
GMA is an acronym for Georgia Municipal Association. All the, most of the cities, if not all of them, in the city of, I mean, in the state of Georgia are, are part of that.
What, questions on any of that, or is anything that I've not mentioned that you're curious about?
I just wanna commend you on, you know, a very thorough report, and I appreciate it, and I know the public does as well, so. Anybody else? Okay, we have reached the public comment portion of our meeting. Uh, anyone wishing to speak in public comment, please come forward and do so at the, at the mic, please state your name and address for the record, and limit your remarks to three minutes. Not everybody wants.
Rhonda McCullers, 401 North Lost Lake Cove. I'm actually here as a representative of the Main Street Advisory Board, and I would like to thank the mayor, Mr. McDougall, and Ms. McPherson for coming out to thrill at the meal and judging our costume contest. It was very ugly that day, and we are thankful that you guys came out. It shows a lot of support, um, to the people, the public citizens who do come out there and see you guys out there in the rain, brave and everything too, and it meant a lot to us. And I would like to thank the VR Police Department and Station 9 Fire Department for coming out and doing the pumpkin carving contest. We are very grateful for you guys, and for you guys, and what all that you do, and it was nice to see those guys in a different, in a fun setting, instead of a dangerous setting. So, I just wanted to publicly thank you guys.
And we thank you, Rhonda, I'll tell you, having been there, it was a rainy day, but I bet you, what, what was y'all's estimate as far as the kids that were there?
There was a lot, and they came at different times, they didn't all come at once, like, it would be swarmed, and then it would thin out, and then it would swarm again, and then it would thin out. I don't have any idea how really, how many people came through, but, but it was a good turnout for such a nasty day.
We had a lot of people, we had a lot of people.
I think overall, it was, it was a good, it was a good thing. I was proud.
Yep.
Went well.
And the kids were cute, and I don't do cute things, but I'm telling you, these, these kids, some of these kids come out in these costumes, and, and it was, the hardest part of the whole day was trying to pick between, you know, the, the kids, especially the little ones, cause you want all of them to walk away as winners, and, uh, and even the adults that were in there to, you know, put a lot of, lot of thought and a lot of time into the, those costumes, so, thank you.
It was a lot of fun, it was a lot of fun, this was my first year to, to help on the board, and it was a lot of fun for me, but to me, it's important to have the community to come out and be involved in these kinds of things, because it does take a lot of time and effort for planning them, um, a lot of work goes into it, you know, of course Sharon, she works her little feet off over there, and, and so, it's really nice when you do have people that, that come out and support it. So, thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
Thank you. Okay, we have reached the-
Come in here.
Oh, I'm sorry, so, I'm so sorry, I didn't say you're getting hot, so.
Good evening, uh, my name is Warren Scandrick, and I live in a Parkview neighborhood in Mural Lake, and, uh, I actually wanted to come this evening to express my gratitude and thanks, uh, to the council at large, uh, but especially to the mayor and to Mr. McDougall. Uh, specifically, um, my, my gratitude is for-
Warren, could you wait just a moment, let the train go by?
Oh, sorry.
We do this about every meeting.
I, I have a big mouth, probably cause both know.
Now it's not bad.
Thank you.
There you go.
All right, certainly, uh, just to kind of regress, what I was saying is, uh, I wanted to express my gratitude and thanks, um, as a result of the efforts of Mr. McDougall and the mayor and the council at large. Um, in the Parkview neighborhood, for years now, we've had some angst and some concern, uh, with respect to the traffic flowing on South Lake Pa-, Parkway as it comes off of Conners Road and enters into that area, and in particular, as we exit the neighborhood, um, the problem that we've had is because of the hill, we've been unable to see cars that crest the hill, and because there are not a four-way stop sign and speed bumps, uh, we have observed traffic speeds getting up between 50, 60 miles per hour, and none of us, uh, many of us, rather, have had near hits and misses as we've tried to come out of there. And actually, there was, in fact, a couple instances where there was one T-bones incident, and also a child was hit two years ago during Halloween. So, we have been trying to lobby for years now, in fact, Chip Sase, who is with me, and Mark Alprez, I would like for them to maybe come up and express their own comments and thoughts around that, but, uh, we have been working on it for that amount of time, Chip in particular initially led off of the effort, and I am so grateful that you guys accomplished in, may I, about three months, what we weren't able to get accomplished in, in the last, uh, three, uh, three years or so. And that is to get the four-way stop signs in, um, we are already starting to reap some benefits from it, because even though the, the signs have not been uncovered, people are already stopping, and so, um, that means a lot to us, because we were concerned, literally concerned about our lives on occasion. So, thanks so much again for all your efforts and support of that, and, um, we will look forward to doing additional work. Now, we are concerned, uh, not concerned, but we do have a question, um, I think they put the covers on last Wednesday, and so, are they just staying on like 10 days or so, or?
My understanding is that the covers will come off on Thursday this week.
Okay.
I was looking for Charlie, because that's who-
Charlie's on vacation.
-gave me the information.
Okay, all right, well, thank you, that's all I had, just wanted to thank you guys, appreciate all the support.
And thank you, sir.
And I'd like to introduce Mark and Chip to follow up.
And while the next gentleman's coming up, you know, it's amazing to us, we have traffic problems all over the city, and it's refreshing that we're able to at least take care of our own streets. Most of our city is crisscrossed by state highways, and so our hands are, are tied many times with stop signs and traffic signals and things of that nature, so it, it's refreshing that we're absolutely able to, to help a situation like that.
Good evening, my name's Mark Alprez, um, I was the previous chief deputy coroner for Douglas County, and was over child death investigations and fatality accidents, uh, current, uh, board member for the Douglas County DFAX. I also live in that Parkview area, and as one who has had to go to families' houses and knock on that door, and make that call to let them know, or to see them face to face to let them know that their child has been hit in the subdivision, or a certain loved one's not gonna come home because of a speeding driver, I wanna say thank you, thank you. Because it has been a time or two to where my home personal son has almost been hit. I got a teen driver, and I care about my community, I care about my neighbors and everyone's in that area. And I guess it was seeing the, the fear in my son's eyes when he came back home to tell me about what had happened, that I'd said, enough's enough, you know, we have to do something. And your eagerness and your ability to understand that, and, you know, having, you know, the education in recreating fatality accidents, just to give you a brief description, if you are in a mid-sized SUV or truck, from topping that crest, if you're doing a speed limit of 25 miles an hour, you have a four-second reaction time, four seconds. Well, when you're doing 50 to 60 miles an hour now through there, and a lot of them are not in SUVs, so if you lower the car height, your reaction time's even lower. So, you're looking at two seconds to two and a half seconds of reaction time. Now, you let a child be crossing that road, not even look and look in the opposite direction than a car to go over, and many, this is an area to where many kids catch the bus in the morning. Our sanitation worker was almost hit there last Tuesday from a car flying 50 miles an hour, breached the other side of the road at the curb to avoid hitting the sanitation truck. So, the stop signs are overwhelmingly welcome, and I know that you might catch some flak from some of those at the bottom of our subdivision who do not want them there, however, if everybody would abide by the speed limit, they would not be necessary. And I greatly appreciate you listening to our, our efforts, or, or listening to our, our request and your efforts in making it happen, it's much appreciated, thank you.
What was your name, I missed that?
Mark Alprez. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir?
Yes. He was thanking you.
I said, thank you.
Good evening, my name's Richard Sase, I live in 12 Oaks, also, I mean, off 1103 Charter Oak Court, and I wanna thank Ms. Doyle there, she has done more to grease the wheels than anybody. I've fought and fought and, well, not really fought, but tried to get this resolved for like three and a half years, and every time we would get almost to that point, somebody had left the city of Villarica or transferred to somewhere else. And so, it was very, very frustrating, and I would come in, and she and I would talk, and she would make phone calls, and people would call me, and, and things would start to happen, and then things would fall apart. And I wanna thank you that it finally came together, my wife and I walk almost every evening, and it's, it's very scary when you're crossing that street, because people come over that hill excessive speed. I'll tell you that in, in my experience walking in the evenings, 85 to 90% of the people do excessive speed, probably super speed or speeds coming over that hill. We had a man about two and a half weeks ago walking his dog, he started, his dog was pulling him across the street, my wife and I were at the crest of the hill, saw him, and were doing motion to slow the car down, the SUV down, they did slow down, and I'll promise you, it was less than a second, and he would have been struck. And I talked to the man, and I said, I've been working on this thing, and from what I understand, we're getting real close. Last night, my wife and I were walking, we walked down past his house, he happened to be out, and he said, thank you. He said, they're finally doing something about it. It's been a major concern since my wife and I moved in over eight years ago. Uh, we had pushed for speed bumps, finally, when they said we'd do a stop sign, all I wanted to do was slow people down. When they said they would like to put a stop sign, make it a four-way, I said, that's awesome, that's even better, if you wanna stop them, that's great. So, Gil, thank you so much for talking with me that day, and we've talked several times on the phone, and everybody else that's called and talked to me, and I just wanna thank you. I know it's, it's been a safety thing, I don't have kids of young age anymore, but I have grandkids now, and my concern is the children in the subdivision, and the teen drivers have been a major concern for me, because they don't think like you and I do, and they have many more distractions with their phones, which is unfortunate, but, you know, we have many, many years' experience of driving, we know to look twice, three times, and I couldn't tell you the amount of times that I had looked left, looked right, looked left, and started, and had to hit the brakes because somebody came over that hill at excessive speed. So, I just wanna thank you very much for that.
Thank you, sir.
Kurt Kraft, 2406 Winter Lake Drive, let me see if I get this right here. Um, on November 1st, 2017, The Times Georgian published an article that stated the North Loop may have a delay that will go beyond the 2022 completion date. In another article, an increase to Villarica taxpayers concerning the water and sewer rates is being proposed as part of the budget to fix the leaking pipes that are losing 300,000 gallons of water a day. I was really relieved to hear Gil mention something about a contract, uh, issue, because two years ago, I asked for an open records request on the city's purchase of 75.48 acres on, by the North Loop. Unbeknownst to the cit-, uh, to the Villarica Development Authority, the city was in negotiations with landowner seller at the same time as the Villarica Development Authority. The city ended up buying the 75.48 acres, and as a result, the city of Villarica spent more than half a million taxpayer dollars when its own development authority could have used their non-taxpayer dollars to acquire that land. The city had no business buying speculative land with no access to that land for many years for future commercial purposes. They had a development authority already in place to handle that type of land acquisition. The city now has this large tract of property, which has been sitting for two years, and according to that article, will sit for at least an additional four years, with half a million dollars of taxpayer money tied up. To make this right, the city should deed that property over to the Villarica Development Authority and replace taxpayer money with the U-DAG fund, which was earned by the development authority, that is also just sitting in a bank. The half million in taxpayer dollars spent on the property will sit there for at least another four years, and it can be applied to lower the anticipated water and sewage rate hike that's being proposed. With regards to planning and zoning, a few years ago, it was the year of the chicken, 2017 is the year of the goat. Four conditional uses allowing goats and chickens in the city of Villarica were passed by the city council, even though your own staff and planning and zoning board recommended against this. These votes hurt property values of homeowners and businesses. On one hand, you approve spending thousands of dollars on a downtown development plan to have a hotel, conference center, museum, et cetera, and then you vote for chickens and goats. Goats and chickens are not mentioned in the comprehensive plan, it's, do you want a city that attracts more businesses and people, or do you want a barnyard? Let's stop with chickens and goats, what if somebody wants pigs and sheep and horses and cattle? I mean, one solution would be to come up with an ordinance that would include all farm animals, we could call it the E-I-E-I-O ordinance. Many years ago, the Villarica Development Authority and the Planning and Zoning Board were set up by the city of Villarica, people on these boards are appointed by the council, trained by the state of Georgia, and serve as volunteers. These volunteers take a lot of time out of their personal lives and are dedicated in their service to the city. You have a development authority, a planning and zoning board, and a professional staff for a reason, it is disrespectful to the volunteers on these boards and your own staff when you ignore their skills, their experience, and their recommendations for political and personal reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Valerie Booth, and I live at 210 North Candler Street. If you go right down here to the antique place, and turn, you go down and go through the stop sign, I'm the second house that's on the left. Um, for years, I've been living there, I've been there since 2001, and I have put up with flooding in my basement, coming from this, down here, this, the water coming down from the antique store, coming down there, and then also coming down this way from where the amphitheater is, or, you know, coming down that way too. There used to be a big gully that went through there, years ago, somebody cut a big gully through there, and they had a pond at the end of it, where all this water drained. Well, I don't know what happened, they covered up the pond, and then they left the gully, and they just put a bunch of rocks and crap all in there to fix the problem, I guess. Well, they didn't fix the problem, the problem is still coming in my yard, and my son even got out and tried to put some little fake gutters up on his own to try to get the water to go away from our home. That my concern is, is with this new project coming in, there's gonna be more asphalt coming in, so to me, that's gonna be more drainage. This problem back here needs to be taken care of, it needs to be addressed. It's, it's ridiculous to have something like this sitting in the city of Villarica, and we're talking about putting this project in here. So, I don't know if y'all are aware of it, if it's, you know, maybe I'm the first one to bring it to your attention, but, um, you know, I'm, that's why I'm here tonight, and I maybe, maybe I will be up here with gratitude too, I hope so, thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. And as always, anybody that speaks in public comments, we will, our staff is aware of what you're saying, and we will respond back to you, and, uh, if you haven't signed in, make sure you do so with a, with an email address, so we can respond back to you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we will move into the consent agenda. Okay, seeing none, we will move into the consent agenda portion of the meeting. And for those in the audience, the consent agenda is a single item that encompasses all things the city council would normally approve with little comment. Each of these items were discussed at the Thursday, and it says date, but that would be, what was it, last Thursday? Okay, that last Thursday's work session. And it was unanimous consensus of the governing body to place the following items on the consent agenda. Item one is professional services agreement with Michael A. Knotts to approve a professional services agreement with Mr. Knotts to provide GIS services. Number two is emergency purchases over $10,000 and that's for lift stations for our pumps, it was for a backup generator. Is that correct, Pete? The backup generator for one of our lift stations. Are those up on the screen? Okay. Number three was consideration of bids to purchase a 50 KV backup generator for the Edge Road Lift Station. Item number four was work authorization for Curtis Environmental Resource for approval of the city to enter into a working relationship with Curtis Environmental Resources to help to prepare requests for proposals, which are RFPs, and task orders. And these are all related to our water and sewer infrastructure issues. Item number five is a work authorization with InfraTech Consultants Incorporated, turn-up-seat engineers, and smart water analysis analytics. And this is for approval of a relationship with InfraTech Consultants for engineering related to water, sewer, and distribution infrastructure improvements. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a move by Councilman Carter, seconded by Councilman Marshman, to approve the consent agenda as written.
As presented.
Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. Tab A, governing body. Ladies and gentlemen, you have the minutes before you. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at those. If so, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
What are you, what is your motion?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for October 3, 2017, October 19, 2017, and October 25, 2017.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion second and one part left out of the last one. Ms. City Clerk, would you please read back the motion?
[inaudible] October 3, 2017, October 19, 2017, and October 25, 2017.
Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, unanimous. Item number two is comprehensive land use plan update.
Mayor and council, we have an October 2018 deadline to submit an update to our land use plan, which was last updated in 2005. We put out requests for proposals. We received five responses. The scoring is shown in your cover sheet. AMEC Foster and Wheeler was the recipient of the top score and our recommendation for this engagement with a not-to-exceed price of $99,880. We have $100,000 budgeted for this project that is in the general fund and I make a recommendation here that we would award this for $99,880 and if there's any overage, that we would bring that back to council for prior approval.
And you are recommending AMEC Foster?
Foster Wheeler.
Okay. I would make a motion that we approve this AMEC Foster Wheeler as presented by the city manager.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman McPherson. Okay, in the discussion, just for the public's edification, what this is, is our comprehensive master plan. Tom, if you would just give us a brief, or someone's staff, would give us a brief overview of what a comprehensive master plan entails and why it's important with the deadline.
Bobby, you want to tell them a little bit about what we're going to get into when we have to do this, since you're going to be in charge of it?
Come on up, Bobby.
Welcome aboard.
Just kind of the gist of what it is and why do we, why do we do it? In fact, it's required by the state, isn't it?
Yep, we do it because we have to do it.
You got an hour to do it.
Well, I can do it like in two sentences.
I like that.
The master plan is your roadmap on how you move forward and how you deal with economic growth, infrastructure issues that you have, everything that entails that, traffic, everything goes into it. And it's done every, what, 10 to 15 years?
Every 10 years.
It's supposed to be done every 10 years unless there's a trigger.
Unless you breach its threshold.
But in this case, DCA let everybody off the hook for, because of the recession. So, I'm not sure we, how we got out to this many years, but...
But everything associated with your growth, your infrastructure, the services you provide, everything is taken into account. And that seems like an awful lot of money, but there's an awful lot of work that has to go into it as well.
When did we complete our last master plan?
2005.
So, our master plan that we are using right now as our roadmap is 12 years old?
Yes, sir.
Lots happened in 12 years in Villarica, I can tell you. Yep. Any questions of staff?
It is required by the state.
It is required, yes.
Any questions while Bobby's up here, let's keep him up as long as we can. Thank you, Bobby.
Tom, do you know these folks?
I have not worked with them, but they had far and away the most significant experience in Villarica. Maybe even having completed as many as five projects here, but never a comp plan.
You will remember them as MAC Tech.
The reason I ask that is I think the last comprehensive plan we had, 2005, we brought a guy in from Kansas. And it took a lot of persuading to get him to do things the way it needs to be done in Villarica. And, you know, there were probably 150 people that were brought in to talk to him about various incentive things to make sure that took place. That's the only concern that I have with this one is you hire people from outside the South that don't understand the way it's done in the South, and it may be done correctly in the South.
Is that with goats and chickens?
Possibly. The issue to me was, and the guy was good, don't get me wrong, he was good with what he did, but having to bring in this number of people to finally get what he was looking for was, it took a long, long time.
Right. I don't think we'll have that issue.
This is a metropolitan Atlanta.
The two principal guys live in Atlanta and the lady who will be doing the public participation also is a Metro Atlanta resident, long time, so.
Long time, too.
No Kansas people.
Okay, I have a motion, I think in a proper second. Would you please read that back?
[inaudible]
Okay, any further discussion? Not called question? All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, our next two items are appointments to our Villarica Library Advisory Board. The first one is an appointment of Ola McLendon to the Library Advisory Board and that council person is Ms. Shirley Marshman. Would you like to say anything about her? I know she has a...
Yeah, she has a long history of, she has a long history in education and she's now the assistant principal at Glanton Heisman. And when I spoke to her, she said she would just be honored to take this position. And she has filled out the application or the paper and turned it in, so she's ready to go.
Okay. And our second nomination is to the Library Advisory Board is Clint Chance. No one, everyone knows Clint, no introductions necessary, but Ms. Brenda Gray passed away recently and there was an opening on the board. So, this is Councilman Danny Carter's appointment, so. Would you like to add anything to?
Well, I don't need to add anything. Like I say, everybody knows Clint and he's been involved with the library for a long time. Thank you, Clint.
You have a country music voice tonight, by the way.
Yep. I can't help it.
And what we'll do on these is normally is they'll come back to, they'll be actually approved at the next meeting, correct? Or do we vote on it or not? We... Okay.
We get approved tonight.
Okay, all right.
They need to take them individually?
How do we normally do this, David? Individually or...
You can do it either way. You could, you could have somebody to move to appoint both of them at the same time, I think.
And then they'll be sworn in at this meeting or the next?
No, at the next meeting.
Okay, all right.
I make a motion to approve Ms. Ola McLendon and also Clint Chance to the library board.
Second.
Motion second. Madam Clerk?
[inaudible]
Okay. Any further discussion? Not? All in favor? Okay, unanimous. Item number five is a MOU, memorandum of understanding with the Villarica Development Authority. Mr. Barber, are you going to handle this or...
No way.
I'll start out, Mr. Mayor, and this is a proposed agreement between the Villarica Development Authority, between the city of Villarica, between the Carroll County Board of Commissioners and the Carroll County Board of Assessors. Ms. Donna Lackey is here and she may present some more information, but the purpose of this is to encourage and provide an incentive package to one of our existing local businesses, Sugar Foods, in order to significantly expand their plant here in Villarica with additional monetary investment in the plant as well as with a promise for some creation of additional jobs. So, Donna can probably give us more details, but that's the purpose of it.
Donna, come on up. Tell us the good news.
Donna Lackey, representing Carroll tomorrow. I'm also a resident of Carroll County, 301 East Highway 5 Route Will, Georgia. I am very proud to be able to say that the Villarica Development Authority has worked arduously over the last year and a half on this project to try to bring the Sugar Foods expansion to fruition. And they will be creating 50 jobs within five years and $53 million in new investment into the community, and that includes new equipment to the community, no transferring of equipment from one plant to a new plant, and within seven years. So, we recommend this from the Villarica Development Authority, which has already approved. I've also just received a text from the county commission meeting. They approved the same memorandum of understanding, seven to zero. And so, we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Donna. Do y'all have any questions? Anybody?
I would just say that's very good information to hear that the county commission just approved it because this just came to us on Thursday.
And that's when they received it also. As is typically the case with a industrial development process, you go through a lot of behind-the-scenes work, legal work, et cetera, as you work out the negotiations. And you have appointed your Villarica Development Authority to be that body that goes through that level of negotiation. We utilized the Georgia Power Company in-plan analysis to assess the cost-benefit of the project, which was presented to the Development Authority. And as I shared with you at the work session last week, we do not just arbitrarily grant these types of incentives through the Development Authority. We put a lot of work into making sure that there's more benefit back to the community than to the business.
And to go along with Councilwoman McDougal's comments, I think, I think what we're saying, I'm not trying to speak for you, sir, but I think we would like to see these probably on a staggered-type situation because it occurred to me today after I talked to Chairman Smith that there could be a situation that the city vote one way and the county vote the other, either for or against. And so, I don't know if it's a real good idea for both to vote at the same time. That needs to probably be staggered. And David, you may want to weigh in on this, but...
Well, this particular project, I mean, it is a very short window. There's no doubt about that because the information came to both the city and the county within really five days of when you're being asked to vote on it. But there has been a lot going on through the Development Authority and leading to this point. Yes, to your point of the city and county voting at staggered times, it's just the nature of the beast that our meetings are on the same night that they are. And generally, there's not going to be an opportunity to stagger them for two separate months. I mean, it's a problem. We could always have a special call meeting and we could have for this one, but we didn't.
You know, I think that the issue is that these are, this is a pretty cumbersome contract. There's a lot of detail in here. I just got it on Thursday and I respect the work that you're doing over there, but when we're asked to vote on it, I need to have more opportunity to review this and talk with David if I need to. But, you know, at this point, I would just want to hear David say he's been involved in this, that he was a big part of writing this.
Yes, I have gone through the contract very carefully. This is not the very first one of these agreements that the city has participated in. And this is, this is exactly similar to other projects that we have approved. There are a number of projects over the years that have been, we've given incentives to in the same manner. This one, rather than a company that's coming in from the outside to build here, it's a company that's already a city citizen and is, they had the opportunity to go to some other places, which not only would have risked the new jobs, you know, our concern was that we would be risking the existing jobs if they liked where their new home was, so we wanted to continue to make this their home. The contract's a pretty standard format for these types of projects and I have read it and I think that it is satisfactory. There are, there are certain steps that the company is going to have to take in order to maintain the incentives. They have to show that they are making the investments that they've said they're going to make. And all along the way, if they don't meet those goals, then they lose the incentives that the city and the county are granting to them. And those are incentives, both, I mean, those goals are both financial investment as well as the creation of certain jobs. Of the 53 jobs that Donna mentioned, I think by the third year, they have to have 35 of them in place. And if they don't, then the incentives drop away. But if they meet those goals and make the investment and grow the economy in the way that they are supposed to, then it's a, it's a good deal for both them and for the city.
That's, that's very good to hear. I don't, I want to make sure that we say we want to be good partners with Sugar Foods. We appreciate having Sugar Foods here. And if you've looked over this, then I'm going to be okay with it.
I'm a member of the Villarica Development Authority and I've been involved in these meetings all along and it's a good deal. It's jobs coming to Villarica and that's what we're looking for. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the MOU for the Villarica Development Authority for this particular project.
Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion second. I just want to make another comment. The city, and not just this city, and not just this county and cities all across this nation, have gotten in trouble by saying, "We have certain incentives in place along the way, and if that doesn't happen, we're going to, you know, take these goodies back." Whose responsibility is it to make sure that they're hitting these high watermarks?
It is my responsibility on an annual basis. On May 30th of each year, I reach out to every bond-involved industry and make sure that they have met and they actually sign off on how many jobs and how much investment they have put in that year. I then turn that over to the tax assessor's office.
Okay. Would you come back periodically or, you know, I think this council would love to see your smiling face and come back? Whose responsibility is it to make sure that they're hitting these high watermarks?
It is my responsibility, on an annual basis, on May 30th of each year, I reach out to every bond-involved industry and make sure that they have met, and they actually sign off on how many jobs and how much investment they have put in that year. I then turn that over to the Tax Assessor's Office.
Okay. Would you come back periodically, or, you know, I think this council would love to, to see your smiling face and come back and tell us that they're hitting all the watermarks and everything's going well.
Very glad to. Thank y'all.
Thank you. You have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Unanimous.
Mr. Mayor, just in closing, I, I will say that I've heard the message loud and clear that you need these types of agreements sooner rather than later in the future, and I'll make sure that message gets passed along to everybody involved in the process.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate that.
How many companies we have with tax incentives? What do we have with these different tax incentives? Could you each question?
Ask that, well. Okay, Tab B, Finance. Ms. Sarah?
Uh, not yet, not yet, we can't.
Good evening. Just verifying that y'all can see the presentation. I have copies if you need them.
We can't.
Low bidder? Is it loaded onto the website?
She's working on it, wait a second, there's the front page, whoops.
Low bidder? What is it called?
We can get to it, though. Worst comes to worst, I'll find it in that email.
Is it that one, the 218 budget presentation?
Thank you, ma'am.
There's two of them.
Mr. Mecklen, why she's doing that?
It'd be right under presentation, the PDF, right?
Do you have any idea how many companies we have as in a, in tax incentives right now? I remember several, but I don't...
There are, there are several. I mean, we can get that list for you.
I've never seen a list of that.
I don't know that there is one. It just dawned on me that, you know, I know that we've had people, Print Pack and, and the bakeries.
Archaluminum was, was one, and the, yeah, Flowers Bakery. I, I can't tell you, sitting here today, which ones are still actively involved in the incentive package. I, we probably are, this may be the only active one.
Actually, in 2016, there was a new audit requirement, and we had to disclose that in the audit financial, so I can actually send that to you, what I got from the Tax Assessor's Office.
Thank you.
I think it kind of goes to my point. Now, if we had 15 and none of us up here know anything about whether they're meeting their goals or not, then, you know, we're not really doing our due diligence.
Right.
We'll expect a regular report from Danny, 'cause he's on the authority, right?
Wait, I'm sorry.
Keep us surprised of the companies and the incentives.
Okay.
All right, go ahead.
Most of these companies want to keep their name out of the news until they're ready.
Alright, so tonight, we're gonna do a little recap of the proposed 2018 budget. In our first or second workshop, I've lost track, in our workshop two weeks ago, we talked about where are we going? And Elisa, if you'll hit that next button, we talked about moving towards financial health by 2020. So this is the proposed budget for 2018, and then we would have a budget for 2019 and then 2020. So we're talking about a three-year period, talking about moving towards financial health for the city. Okay, moving on. This is just a, kind of a simple representation of our major funds in the city and where the, what the financial status looks like. Our general fund, you can see that that bucket is not leaking, that is a healthy fund. Our water and sanitation, which is our waste industries, the garbage pickup, those two buckets, they are leaking slightly, but those, we can mend pretty easily. It's our sewer area that, that's where we're draining water profusely, and that's, we're talking large dollars there. Go back to, I think, and then solid waste. It is very unhealthy as well, but we're talking smaller dollars, so I didn't show it draining quite as profusely. So those are our major funds. Going on, Elisa, just wanted to present some of the major changes for this 2018 budget. First one being the change in fiscal year. We've asked the council to change the fiscal year from January 1st, from, right now, it's January 1st through December 30th, and we want to change that to October 1st through September 30th. This will allow better budgeting practices and projections during the year. So we are...
Sarah, would you elaborate on that? Why is it better budget, budgeting practices?
Currently, when we set our budget, we're guessing completely on property taxes. I don't know how big our tax digest is, which is the assessed value for the properties in the city. I don't know the millage rate that the council's going to approve, so when we set the budget for 2017, we were purely guessing on property taxes, yes. Picking that out of thin air. By changing to this, we'll be setting the budget and the millage rate at the same time, so we'll know going into this next budget what our property tax revenue should be. Additionally, when we're halfway through the year, we'll have, receive the majority of our general fund revenue, so I can do some more projections as far, you know, how's the year going? Do we need to slow down? Are there projects we can get done? Right now, I don't necessarily have control on that, because we received the majority of our general fund revenue in, in the last three months of the year. So this will alleviate those two major problems and give us more, more control over the financial projections and things. So we're proposing a nine-month budget in 2018. This would be January 1 through September 30th, with around a million-dollar deficit. You can see, it's just shy of that, $999,362. Okay, going on to the next slide.
Well, you know, I've got to ask a question there. People are gonna look at that and they're gonna say, "What do you mean a deficit?" You know, "How are we gonna have a deficit?" Can you explain how, why that's the way it is?
Sure. So since we, it's a nine-month period, in order to change the fiscal year, like I said, we received the majority of our general fund revenue, October through December. So by taking those three months out of this year, I will not have as much revenue as I would to match my nine months' worth of expenditures. So basically, my expenditures will exceed my revenues by about a million dollars.
And our plan is to repay that?
Yes. Go on to the next slide. Our plan, so...
Oh, on my head. Whoops.
Yes. So our policy requires 40% of our expenditures to, so we need to have that equivalent in our fund balance, our unrestricted fund balance. So if you see at the top, 2017 budgeted expenditures are $11.9 million. 40% of that is $4.7 million. So when we look at, when we compare that to our unrestricted fund balance at the end of 2016, we had $455,000 more than required. So when that deficit, when we get to the end of that nine-month period, that deficit will reduce our fund balance by the million dollars. However, we expect that we'll be able to repay that within one to two years, because we already have a little bit of a cushion there, and we expect within one to two years, we could fully, you know, get back to the 40%. Okay, next slide. Additionally, we'd like to maintain the millage rate, and again, we're talking about this three-year period of getting to financial health. This is a 10-year millage rate history. In 2017, y'all adopted the lowest tax rate we'd seen in over 10 years.
And you, how much was a mill?
Currently, a mill is almost equivalent to about $500,000. $500,000. Okay, going on. Additionally, another major change in this budget is trying to get away from the general fund subsidies currently, or in the past, I should say. The general fund has subsidized the water sewer funds and the sanitation solid waste funds, because they couldn't afford all their expenditures on their own. So we've taken all that away in 2018, except for $75,000 transfer from the general fund to our sanitation solid waste fund. But still, even with that being said, both funds will still be borrowing operating cash from the general fund. They're in one big bank account, and so those funds have to use the, the general fund cash to do daily operations.
And in the little bitty box down at the bottom, it says to pay the full bond payment, I mean, full bond payment from the general fund would require a 3.5-mill increase.
Yes. Yes, our bond payment currently is $1.7 million, which would roughly equivalent, the equivalent to three and a half mills. So when you think about, you'd have to increase the tax rate by that much in order to, to take it out of the general fund. Okay, going on. Another big change in this budget is increasing water sewer rates. We have contracted in 2017 with a firm, Raftellis, they took all of our information, all of our financial data, and they looked at seven year, or, excuse me, 10 years. They wanted to see what it's gonna take to get us healthy in the water sewer, sanitation, solid waste side. So they looked at the revenues that would be required in order to pay for our daily operating expenses, as well as our capital needs, 'cause we'd like these funds to be able to fund these capital projects through cash, not having to borrow for those. We'd al, we also looked at bond payments. So as Tom calls it, we have a bullet coming in 2020. This is where our debt payment jumps from 1.7 that I just said to over 2 million. I think it's a $460,000 jump in 2020. So that's why we're trying to, you know, that's kind of why we're talking about 2020. We need to be ready for that.
Debt payment on?
That is our debt payment on our $34 million sewer plant. So proposing to increase water revenue by an average of 7%, and increasing sewer revenue by an average of 35%. Raftellis preliminary estimates are showing water revenues need to increase by over 20% and sewer rate revenues need to increase by over 75%. Again, we'd like to spread that over three years. Okay, going on to the next slide, we'll start seeing some examples. So this is for an average residential customer. Our average residential customers use about 4,500 gallons of water per month. So this is based on their, what their bill would be with, with these proposed changes. The proposed changes, again, are heavier on the sewer side than the water side, so if we have customers that do not have sewer, they're not gonna see as large of an increase as customers with sewer included, because again, we have to pay for the sewer plant that we're using. So you can see, this customer would see a jump from 6251 to 7168. So that's what their new water sewer, just the water sewer portion of their bill would be. It would be a $9.17 increase per month. Going on. Wanted to look at, what do other cities pay? These are the, these are other cities with similar population as Villarica. I looked at what a customer for the same 4,500 gallons, what these other cities pay for that. Patter Springs, they pay 6884, and keep ours in mind, it's in the red box, 7168. Fairburn pays 8085 for the same amount. Mountain Park, 7243. Monroe, 6060, and Winder, is it Winder or Winder? 7453. Next slide. This compares the areas around us, again, same 4,500 gallon customer. In Paulding County, they would pay 7144. Carroll County, 6198. Douglas County, 6565. Noonan, 6611. And Hurd County, 7290. And lastly, I just said, if you'll go on to the next one, aren't we glad we don't live in Atlanta, where the same customer is already paying $107.37 compared to our proposed 7168? Okay, going on. Another change in this proposed budget is the water sewer senior discount. We're proposing that it be available to low-income seniors only, so this would be 65 years and older, maximum household income of $24,120 or less. We did some research, and this is the amount that Georgia Power uses. Atlanta Gas and Light actually uses a lower number. Douglas County, they use a similar formula, and I think Atlanta uses a flat $25,000 as their threshold. And this is actually based on the poverty level. It's two times the poverty level, which is 12,060. I guess, I don't know if the assumption is two people in the house, so you're, you're taking it twice, but again, that's 24,120. And it's gotta be the, the person applying for the discount needs to be the primary title holder or a lease holder. So if you have a parent living with, you know, a, a child, it would need to be the person who owns the house that's applying. And this discount would allow a $5 base on the water and sewer, which is what they have now. Okay, going on. And here, we'll see an example of the senior rate changes. Our average seniors consume 3,000 gallons per month, so that's what this example is based on, instead of the 4,500 like the other one. So here, you'll see the discounted senior on the bottom and the non-discounted senior at the top, which no longer, which would be someone who didn't qualify any longer for the low income. Basically, they're paying the same as all the other residents. So their current bill would be 3522, jumping to 5530, bringing them up to the other resident, what the other residents are paying. And then the discounted senior at the bottom would be an increase of 608, jumping from 3522 to 4130. Okay, moving on. Water and sewer capital changes. So Pete came up with a list of over 40 crucial projects that need to be addressed. He narrowed that down to 10 to see what we could actually get done over the next three years. But again, we don't have the cash for that to pay from the water sewer side. As we're, since we're spreading, the rate increases over three years, we need cash now in order to fix these problems, instead of letting them get worse until we have cash available. So we're proposing a low-interest loan from Jifa, which is the Georgia Environmental Finance Authority. We originally estimated $10 million, but they, we've learned that it, the maximum is $5 million per year, that that's included in this budget. Next is sanitation and solid waste rates. So we, we analyzed sanitation, which is garbage pickup, so that's Waste Industries pickup. Solid waste is the curbside pickup that our streets department does every week from the city. And we looked at, what does it cost us to do each of them? And they're actually about, it costs us, the city, about the same amount of money, but you can see the difference in what we're charging is so, so different. So right now, we charge $12 for the garbage pickup and $5 for our solid waste pickup. Like I said, it costs us about the same, so that solid waste one, remember that, that bucket said unhealthy. We have got a long way to go on that, but we're spreading it over three years. Increasing the sanitation fee from 12 to 1250 per month, and increasing the solid waste pickup fee from $5 to 750 per month. If you go on to the next slide, we'll see an example of this same customer who uses 4,500 gallons. This is what their full bill would be. So here, we've added the sanitation and the solid waste. So you can see the total increase for these customers is $12.17. This is the same thing, allowing the senior discount for low-income seniors, same qualifications, minimum household income of $24,120. This discount is only on the sanitation piece, which is the garbage pickup. This is a 25% discount. So it's not a nice round number, but if you go on to the next slide, we'll see the example. So again, these are our, the average senior customer using 3,000 gallons per month. Again, at the top, these would be seniors that didn't qualify for the low income anymore, they'll be paying what the other residents are paying. And then the discounted senior at the bottom, so you can see their sanitation fee, that's the middle column, would be 938. It's not a nice round number, but that's 25% off of 1250, which is what the other residents are paying. So the total increase for the discounted seniors is 990, I mean, the total increase is 996. Okay, next slide. Again, another item we're proposing is mandatory sanitation service. Currently, we have about 370 customers that only pay for solid waste pickup, but we're proposing that the garbage pickup be mandatory, and we're, I've mentioned it multiple times, we're still auditing that 370 customers, 'cause we believe, well, I've already found over 150 of them that Waste Industries is charging us for a can, but that customer's not paying us for the garbage pickup.
Would you, would you repeat that?
We've already found about 150 customers who Waste Industries is charging to pick up their can, and the customer's not paying us for that, so we need to rectify that.
Let me, let me just clarify, because you don't say it here. These are for water customers, but residential only.
Correct. No commercial.
It just, it doesn't say residential, I just want to make sure that's what we're...
Yes, it's residential only, and they're inside city limits, so we don't pick up outside of city limits.
Not apartments.
All of our commercial customers have to get their own garbage pickup. Alright. Next two slides are frequently asked questions. So the first one, what if we spread the rate changes over more years? Like we, like I've said, we're, we're spreading it over, proposing to spread it over three years. If we were to take even longer, we would not be able to manage the bond payment increase of $460,000 that we're expecting in 2020. We would, if we take that, the Jifa loan, we wouldn't have the money to pay it back. And we would continue to drain the cash and the reserves of the other funds, particularly the general fund. Remember, that, that bucket was healthy, but if we continue to drain it, then the general fund's gonna be a leaky bucket as well. The next, the last frequently asked question is, what do we risk if we don't improve our financial health? Again, we will continue to drain the cash and the reserves of our general fund, but this doesn't just affect water sewer, it affects our whole city, 'cause if we affect the general fund, we'll be affecting public safety, so our police department will be able to grow as our community grows. Recreation, we may have to cut out some of the wants if we can't, if we're using general fund money to subsidize these other funds, then we won't be able to expand some of our programs the way we'd like to. Infrastructure, lack of maintenance and improvements for Rose Water Sewer and Stormwater, that's kind of how we've gotten to where we are. So we want to continue, we want to improve on our preventative maintenance and improvements for our infrastructure. Skipped over it, but personnel, I think there's been times in the city where the, the number of employees has dipped. We're definitely making strides in paying people better, but, you know, if we continue to drain the general fund, that may, may not be a possibility for us. And lastly, our bond rating would decline, and that could affect higher interest rates in the future. Next few slides. I know it's pretty small on the screen, but I just... I know it's pretty small on the screen, but I just, kind of summarizing some of the numbers for the actual budget. I'll go quick through these, since it's, like I said, it's real small on the screen. The budget is available online, and it is available at City Hall, at the City Clerk's desk, for anybody who would like to see more in detail. This first slide is just a summary in total. So the far-left column is our general fund. You can see all the revenue sources on the top portion. So our total revenue expected is 8.6 million. However, if you see the, the line above total sources, that's use of fund balance. That's that million-dollar deficit that I was talking about. I have to show it, I have to, I have to show a balanced budget in the general fund, so I'm showing that we're using fund balance to make that whole. And then expenditures matches that at 8.6 million. We have some other smaller funds to the right. Hotel motel, we expect $172,000. And our cemetery fund is expecting to use $15,000. And then lastly, is our debt, that's 1.7 million. Going on to the next one. We'll see, in the green, those are our capital projects funds, which is SLOST, and our road projects, which is L-MIG. And then the blue columns are enterprise funds. So we're expecting, at the very bottom, you can see, even since we're, you know, we're spreading the rate increases over a few years, we're going to expect losses for a couple of years. So with this, we're expecting a $731,000 loss in the water sewer fund for this year, and in sanitation, a $57,000 loss. I want to point out that those are not actually cash losses, because these numbers include depreciation. So it is an expenditure for our books. It'll show up in the audit, but it's not cash that I'm paying out to anybody. Going on. This, again, just kind of in total, the revenue we expect for the entire city is 19.6 million. And jump on to the next one. Total expenditures is 20.488 million. So again, expenditures being higher than revenues.
And this is a nine-month budget?
This is a nine-month budget. Next page. Again, if anybody wants to see more, the capital projects in detail, it's in the budget. Just wanted to kind of show our total capital projects, 8.1 million, with 5 million of that being the Jifa. We're not pulling any money from the general fund in this nine-month period for capital projects. We hope to get to that point, but in this, you know, time, we won't be able to. Majority of it between the Jifa and SLOST is where I'll be paying for these things. Okay? Going on to general fund personnel. These are the, the positions that we proposed in this budget. Mostly new positions. We have some upgrades. Some of the positions, we have delayed start dates in order to save us some money there, but we knew we needed these positions. So the total cost of adding these positions, this is salary and benefits, is $177,000. I just made a note there, so you can see where that fell in the total pool of personnel. Our total general fund personnel budget is 5.1 million. So kind of a, a small portion when you compare it to the whole thing, but still very important. Next, general, this is water sewer personnel. Adding two employees for our distribution and collection. We delay them to March 1st, but very important on these, because since we did not qualify or since we didn't get funded for the CDBG project, those pipes still need to be replaced, and we think we can do those in-house. So these two positions would allow us to do that. That is all. Any questions?
Can we go back to page 15? General fund personnel?
Uh huh.
There's, most of these we've discussed, and, you know, looking forward, I would still like to see justifications written that we can all look at, you know, for next year's budget, so that we can say, you know, why are we adding a park ranger? What's the benefit of that? So that the public will know why we're spending more money, adding more people. But the one that I don't remember seeing before is the assistant finance director position.
Yes. Talked to Tom about this, and went ahead and added it to this budget, too, to see an upgrade in title. And I think it's a move up from one pay grade to the next. This would be Louise, my, she's my right-hand person. She runs the finance department when I'm holed up doing the audit or the budget. I think she deserves it. But more importantly, business operations manager is kind of a made-up title. And if we do move forward with the salary steady in this short year, I would, I want her to have a title that means something, so that when these people come in here, they're not matching her towards nobody in other cities that have that title. So I think she deserves it, and.
And what you just said is exactly why we need those justifications. So that we can look at each one of those positions as elected officials and say, our department head told us they needed that position for this reason. So.
Okay.
And I'm speaking for me, maybe. That's not the wish of the council, but.
That's correct.
No, that's correct. And I think, just to be clear, this isn't the first time you brought this up. We talked about this, this particular position before, right?
No.
Not in this budget season, no.
So this is the first time we've seen it tonight? I must have thought it somebody. Okay. I knew it.
I love budgets, so y'all, I pick these things apart. So, you know, and I, and I just, I just want to make a broad sweeping statement. I've said it before, I said it Thursday, and I'll say it properly until this budget's approved. But we are asking our residents to pony up and pay more. And we're asking our seniors to pay more. And I think it's completely fitting, and as far as this elected official's concerned, very appropriate for the council, for the staff and the council to vote accordingly. And I've asked this question, and I know the answer, but I want to hear it again. Our 2016, comparing the nine-month, 2017 budget to what the proposed 2018 nine-month budget, what is that as far as increase or decrease?
It is 2% increase.
Okay. I would just add this again, for what it's worth, that, you know, since we're asking more of our residents, I think that, that we should go to them with a budget that does not illustrate any increase. That would mean my desire as the mayor, I don't vote on the budget, but I do have veto power. So I would just like to continue to make that statement as we have these budget meetings that we consider that very strongly. And another thing I want to add, and I'm, I'm not contradicting myself, I guess, in one way and I am in another, but I feel very strongly, and perhaps it's due to the fact that I worked here almost 14 years, that we not but balance the budget on the backs of the employees that work here. So have we looked at that again, as far as some merit-based increase for 2018?
We have not added any parity money in here. And if we do so, then the, the only real difference is, we set what, what we felt like was a reasonable deficit limit of a million dollars. So we can go over that. But we felt like that a million dollars would put us in a position where in just one budget cycle, we could get back to a 40% fund balance. If we get over that, then we're going to start getting into a second year. So that, that would be the, the biggest single impact, I think.
All right, let's talk numbers. I'm going, I'm going to borrow the coach's phrase here. He don't like percentages, and sometimes I don't either. So 2% of our budget is how much money?
Four, I mean, 2% of 20 million would be, what, 400,000? I do want to point out that 2% is citywide. So the general fund actually has a reduction, and I'll have to come back to you with those exact numbers, unless somebody has their budget book, I can pick them out, but.
Isn't it in that summary?
It's in the budget book, I just don't have a copy of it with me. The general fund is actually reduced from this, that 75% of the 2017 year, because I didn't have enough revenue to match nine months, you know?
Look at page 14.
Yeah, and I was going to ask that question, too. So basically, what you're saying is that, you know, what I'm looking for a comparison on is the general fund budget. Because if we, if our SLOST revenues increase, and Douglas County, which they did, this past SLOST referendum that was passed, then, I know that's a part of the budget.
Right.
But I'm looking specifically for general fund.
Right. No, the general fund reduced in this, from the 75% of the 2017 to 2018, because I'm working with less revenue. So even with that deficit, the general fund is a reduction, and I'll have to get you that exact number. I think the biggest thing is, we're going to have a full year of the Douglas, now that we've had a full year of the Douglas County SLOST, we did include more of that. So your, it includes the capital projects in that 2% increase. So I could get back to you with better.
I love that. And if you get that number for me.
Okay.
And again, just so the public understands, in our budget, not only is there a general fund budget, which is the part of the budget that pays for day-to-day operations, just to, to put a general title on it, but it also includes the capital budget, which is part of the general fund, but also SLOST. So any SLOST monies that come into the city from Carroll County or Douglas County is also included in that budget. So former councilman used to say, liar's figure and figures lie. Well, one of the things you got to look at when you're looking at a budget like this is that if SLOST revenues increased, then it could make your budget look like it went up 15 or 20 percent, when in fact, some of that was because of the voters of either Carroll or Douglas approved a SLOST referendum. So that's why it's important to compare apples to apples. In this case, I would, I would like to see general fund nine months, 2017, compared to general fund 2018.
I would think that it'd be affected also by the fact that we're taking on some new employees to try to get some of these jobs done. You know, whether it's water and sewer, adding additional police officer. But I know you've tried to save us, I don't even know, save us, but try to keep the expense down by having some delayed starts on some of those employees.
Right.
But we need them. We're growing, and we can't do the job with the same number of people. Especially if we want to do more of that water sewer stuff in-house and not be hiring it out to someone else. You're still spending the money, you're just giving it to someone else, sometimes more.
Any other questions?
Well, Sarah, I just want to commend you and the staff and Mr. Barber for putting together a, a good budget, a great budget, actually. And the thing that I would love for our representatives from newspapers to, to use as a focus here is, is financial health by 2020. And, and I think that's important. As a city, I see us moving forward. I see the train pulling out of the station, and, and we're all a part of it. We've hired some good, good folks. We have good folks that already work here, that do a tremendous job for us. And we're very blessed to live in a community where we have industrial base to help offset the cost to our property owners. But with that, we need to right the ship. The ship is floundering, the ship is, has holes in it in some cases, and we're trying to right that ship. And I, and I think that, that if we stay the course and we do the things that we know that we have to do to be fiscally responsible, that we will have financial health by 2020. So I commend you and your staff on, on being a part of that.
Thank you.
Any questions of council? From council?
Second item is, we got to jump back to 2017. We need some budget amendments in 2017. First one is in regards to building permits. So our revenue, it's permits and inspections. Our, our revenue is above and beyond our budget. So I'm asking for an increase in the revenue line item of $180,000. With that, we have to turn out and pay Carroll County a significant portion of that. That's why we've asked to add the building inspector to our staff to help kind of curb some of that. So we need to increase that line item as well by $80,000. And then the other 100,000 would be to decrease the use of fund balance. So like Tom said earlier, we had, we had budgeted $100,000 for the comp plan in this year's budget, but in order to balance our budget for 2017, the only item we took out of fund balance was that 100,000 for the comp plan. But because we've had growth in the city, we no longer need to take that out of fund balance in 2017. So just asking for that budget amendment as well. And second of all, we've had increase in attorney fees with all the changes this year citywide. I'm asking to increase that budget by $25,000, and we've actually received more prior-year property tax. So this is people paying up on the taxes they owed from '15, '14, and earlier. I have more than I budgeted there, so we would offset that expense with that revenue. Any questions?
This is kind of a related question I should ask, it's actually in item number one, but the Jifa project list is in our budget, correct? Or is it? The Jifa list, I know we had discussed projects that we were.
Since we didn't know exactly which ones we would do first, and we don't necessarily have the engineer's cost estimates on them, we've kind of just set a blanket $5 million for capital.
Well, once we have developed that list to a sufficient point, then we will, that will be presented to the council and available to the public.
All right. Tom showed me the sheet I wanted to see in the budget. The general fund expenditures for that short year in 2018, the general fund decreased by 3%. So even with adding those people, we trimmed that, backed this budget as far as we could.
Councilman Bass wants to know what 3%?
Tom, do you still have the page? 240,000 or so.
Oh, let's see. It looks like it's, it's 3% of 8 million.
240,000.
Yeah, I mean, you've got, it's on two pages, and I.
I'd just like to see that by the next, you know, meeting. We've got a budget meeting on Thursday, so that would be a.
Okay.
A budget hearing or a budget meeting?
Oh, wow.
I've had it changed on my calendar. I was curious.
We advertise it as a public hearing, so that citizens can have time to make comments about the budget, but we can present.
It would be great if our newspapers could pick that up, too. We have a budget hearing this coming Thursday, so we would love to see all y'all back again in 10 times as many.
Yeah, it looks like it's a quarter of a million dollars.
What's a quarter of a million dollars? I'm lost in.
That's 3%.
A decrease in the general fund.
A decrease in the general fund for the nine months 2017 to the proposed budget 2011, that's a good thing.
Correct.
Okay.
Back to the 2017 budget amendments. Any questions? Can y'all vote on that?
I'm sorry?
Can y'all vote on that?
Oh, we got to vote on it? That's right, these are amendments, we got to vote on these.
No, you're just going.
That was almost in unison, we got to vote on these. Okay. You all have heard the presentation, I will entertain a motion.
Trying to formulate the motion in my head here. I make a motion that we approve the budget amendments having to do with building permits, professional building inspection, use of fund balance, and attorney's fees. Did I miss something?
Increase in the prior-year property tax.
Increase in the, increase in the prior-year property tax.
Do I have a second? Okay, motion dies for lack of a second.
Repeat that motion.
I would like you to clarify that.
Yeah.
Motion again.
David, would it not be, would it not be proper to, to make a motion to approve the budget amendments as presented by staff and in the document?
I can, I can.
Yes, I think that would be an appropriate motion.
Make a motion to approve the amendments as presented by staff and as listed on the document here, page of the budget presentation. Page.
It's actually on your cover sheet.
I'll suck at that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Now we can discuss, discussion. Hearing ended. Call question, all in favor? Was that unanimous? Thank you. That was fun. Item number four, year-end compensation. What did I do? Oh, I'm sorry.
September.
September financial update. I knew you had such good information.
Okay. This is the September financial update, which is nine months through 2017. All right, starting at the top, our general fund cash at the end of September was 3.6 million dollars. It's already over 5 million as of today, because we're starting to receive in our property taxes. Going on to the major revenue statuses, I'll change that top one, it's not money lost, that's our sales tax money that we get in. We have received 64% of our budget at 1.5 million dollars, which is 2% higher than where we were at this point last year. Property tax, as I said, we're starting to get that in, by the end of September, we had received $162,000 of that. Occupational tax, we received most of this earlier on in the year, we received almost $370,000, 14% higher than last year. And permits inspections, which is the one y'all just voted on, our year-to-date is $306,000, which is almost $200,000 higher than what we budgeted. Next is our major fund status, our revenue, total budget is 11.9 million dollars in the general fund, and we've received 42% of it, like I said, we received most of it at the end of the year, but we are trending higher than last year. Expense, total budget, 11.9 million dollars, we've spent 66% of that, just a hair higher than last year, so that's pretty good, considering our revenue is 14% higher than last year. Okay, next one is...
What's a hair?
.4%. I was trying to use something other than percentages. Water sewer fund, if you want to scroll up, Alisa, we actually had positive cash at the end of September in our water sewer fund, $188,000. Major revenues, water sewer sales are down slightly from last year, but as we talked about on Thursday, the weather was very different this summer compared to last summer. Tap fees, we've received over $418,000 in tap fees this year. Again, the city's growing, that's great news.
82% increase.
Yes, 82% higher than last year. Water sewer fund, our revenue in total is 3% higher than last year, we're at 4.1, almost 4.2 million dollars. And our expense, we've spent more than we've earned so far this year, but we are still less than our budget at this point, so we're still holding, you know, we're still maintaining where we need to be. Solid waste, we have a negative cash position of $365,000, so that's the cash that this fund is borrowing from the general fund. Our solid waste, which is our, the garbage pickup, well, I guess it's both, we are down slightly from last year at .1%, and our revenue overall is down compared to last year, and our expense is much higher, 11% higher than last year. Again, this has to do with our CPIU increase that Waste Industries pushes out to us, but we haven't pushed that on to our customers.
Another acronym.
CPIU, Consumer Price Index Urban.
Okay, what that is basically is, and I know y'all get tired of me saying this, but for those that may not follow every meeting, Waste Management charges us per can, and they have it in their contract with the City of Villarica to go up based on this Consumer Price Index, whatever the other letter was, urban. We have not passed that on to our customers. So using your analogy of the candy bar, the payday candy bar, whatever that number happens to be, we're not solvent, we're bringing, we haven't, I guess, our business person that we do business with has adjusted their rate, we have not done the same.
Yeah, we've moved on from the candy bar, we're down to the trucks now. And candy bars now.
And it's not just the, what they charge us, you know, we have other fees that go into it that we're not considering, it's the cost of mailing out the bills, and, you know, the ladies that work customer service, so. Any other questions on that? All right, moving on. The last item is a request for year-end compensation for our employees.
I could interject this for a second. I'd like us to consider tabling this. I've had at least a couple council people bring forth some different ideas of how we might handle this. We usually make this decision in December, so we do have time. So I'd like to make a motion to table this till December, and look at some other options for this year-end compensation.
Okay, I have a motion to table this until the December meeting.
I'll second.
And I have a second. Madam Clerk, would you please read the motion back? To table the year, not this, to table the year-end compensation for... And just, and this is one of those things that we need to make sure on clarification. Councilman, would you amend your motion to include year-end compensation for full-time employees and permanent part-time, or 12-month part-time? Would you amend your motion to include that?
Sure. Make a motion to table the end-of-year compensation having to do with full-time employees and part-time permanent employees.
And I'll second that.
Okay, have a motion, second, discussion. Okay, if not, all in favor? Item is table till the December meeting. Okay.
Sarah, would you take a minute and give the council an update on where we are with the cycle billing implementation?
So we've made it through the whole month of October. October was the first month, we changed the due dates for our customers, we have about 6,000 customers, and we divided the city into four geographical areas. It equates to about 1,600 customers per cycle, I believe. So, you know, we notified them with the flyers, we put notices in their bills, phone calls for the individual cycles as they went out, all with information about their new due dates, and like I said, we've made it through October, so we still have, cycle three was actually due today, that's the Mirror Lake area, on their new due date, and we have cycle four, which is, I want to say south of 20, they are due on the 14th, so they, they've been least affected by this, their due date stays about the same, our due date used to be the 15th for everybody. We've had plenty of conversations with people about it, but, I mean, overall, it's gone smoother than I could have expected, so.
David, do we have any?
I have no reason to go into executive session.
All right, with that, I would entertain a motion that we adjourn.
I'll make a motion we adjourn.
Second.
What happened? Is something wrong?
No, 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 no.
Oh, you don't want to adjourn yet?
No, it's fine.
Okay, I have a motion to adjourn, do I hear a second?
You had to second.
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor? We are adjourned. Y'all have to tell me what that is, I'm...
David can tell you what it is. What are you saying? I got to run, I got people waiting for me.